Oh, I think just talking on it. Okay, possibly. Hear me off. And then I saw that you saw about.
Really. And we don't know those budget. You know.
So you guys did some of those. I want thirty five now.
I was saying that's right. Random.
So it's like. I don't know how you guys get.
I don't know. Just.
A minute.
Bad. Since.
Yeah, I get much. So admire. Excellent. I said, I said, oh. Having a good first day.
So. This is.
Where now?
I was trying to. Cost.
Within the. Change.
Okay. The.
Look at it.
Yeah, excuse me. Yes, my job. There he goes. Now.
No, I was.
Concrete line. I don't know what that is. Was that on the list or not? It was on the list.
Okay. So he goes.
Then he. So. We're using. And we'll give you a new. Really, I don't think that's. Sounds like. That I haven't said.
But I haven't done that yet.
He was. They're like. Just see that inside. But you know. I know. Small.
Oh, yes. I got you. So you'll. That she along her way. The mayor. She should be here shortly. Oh, gosh, she was walking down.
Do a little bit.
Cool.
Can we blood control and chemic. Yeah.
It's not a list, but it's not bad. No, I can. Great. Want me to send it for? Okay. She's looking like it. Okay.
Sorry about the late start. Apologize. I don't know what time it is. Oh, not too bad. I'd like to welcome everyone and call to order. The study meeting of the West Valley City Council this February twentieth. Twenty twenty four, we are beginning at. Four thirty one in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members around the table. So we'll begin with Councilman Northville, Councilman Hune. Councilman Fitzdunanu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Christensen. Myself, we're also joined at the desk. With our interim assistant city manager, Mr. Flores and our city recorder, Ms. Kamik. Uh, we have the minutes from February sixth, twenty twenty four. I will turn those minutes to the council for discussion or emotion.
Motion to approve the February twenty sixth minutes, February sixth. February sixth. We approved. Six.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those stand passed. We will now turn to our regular meeting for tonight. Mr. Flores, do we have any changes?
Yeah, let's have a couple. Items to bring up, uh, one is for resolution twenty four dash twenty four. Uh, it was requested that the uh, map be added for the wetland park. Uh, so that's their year review. And then also for S B one dash one dash twenty twenty three. And ordinance twenty four dash zero five. Um, which is the stub street that was brought up in the study meeting two weeks ago. Um, I know there's additional questions. On that, um, and so both Dan Johnson and Steve Lehman are here if. You have questions you want to ask right now. Um, on that before we. Get into the meeting tonight.
Do we know the cost to? Move. To remove the road and add the and then add the road and then add the meters and remove the meters. All that.
Worth forty to fifty thousand dollars for that.
And that's the entire bill? Putting everything back together?
Yeah.
Is the school gonna? Is the school gonna do a fence along? That? North property line?
Excuse me, thank you. Uh, the school will be doing a six foot chain link fence on the north side of the property.
Okay. No other questions?
So can? The motion then. As currently proposed, or at least in their favor, is the vacation? The removal of those improvements at the cost of forty to fifty thousand dollars?
Correct, that is, that is, um. What engineering is proposing.
Is. I mean, are you? Okay, so let me phrase this, so. And we still. Could the council vote to then? Vacate, but not. Adjust any of those improvements, just leave it as is, I guess that's the question.
Could be a question.
That is a possibility.
But I'm just.
Right, yeah, and there's a lot of reasons that. You know, if it looks like a street, it will act like a street and and as I mentioned in the study session last week, there will be two schools here, one of which is a high school. So we anticipate cars backing down fifty six like we talked about and then into the subdivision. The one thing I thought about as well with the chain link fences, um. If it's gonna remain looking like a dedicated right of way, kids are gonna hop the fence and. You know, that's gonna be problematic for the the residents there. Um, and then I think just really the burden, um, it's an old county standard right of way, so it's fifty feet in width. Which carried a thirty five foot width of asphalt. Um, our fifty four foot right away today is twenty nine feet of asphalt, so. Just the burden of not only snow removal, but just maintenance asphalt breaks down so much quicker than asphalt, I mean, it's than concrete. Many of you will remember Ken Mian proposing the Newton Farm uh, vacation on the north side of phase four. There were two homes, the grade difference really didn't allow the connection to be made, so he went in and pulled out the street. Landscape the two yards and ran the improvements across the front, looks, looks like you'd never know that there was a road there. Uh, although that's not the case here because both homes will need a drive approach. But the curb gutter sidewalk, all the asphalt will be gone in favor of a concrete driveway.
Looks like a shared driveway. Kind of got in the middle and then extend out the yards to them.
Okay, thank you. Makes sense to me.
The, if I remember correctly, the school would prefer that an access point, correct? Or was that wrong?
Well, initially, initially, uh, you're correct. They were proposing to connect their back half of their project to the right of way. Um, simply because it just allowed another point of access. And when we saw the site plan initially, that's when engineering felt that it was critical that we got on top of that before. That was made, those improvements were made. Um, and in this case, and I was talking with Mr. Johnson today. Uh, they're probably far along in their infrastructure. To if if the council weren't going to vacate this right away to do a cul-de-sac, that's what city ordinance would require. Don't know that would even be possible today, given all the work that they've been doing. Uh, but that was the initial thought was they would connect into the street.
Okay, not seeing any other questions, thank you. All right, were there any other questions about tonight's agenda? We'll move on to our public hearings, our first one is application. G P Z eight twenty twenty three. And. So what one of those? Thank you, Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon. This item is one that the council actually reviewed a couple of months ago. And it was continued, as you may recall, because Magna Water had some concerns about the the rezoning. The applicant back back and uh, had several conversations with Magna Water. And this proposal now includes a development agreement where there are a use restrictions. That would accompany the rezone if the council chooses to approve the rezoning. And these use restrictions have been reviewed by. Uh, by Magna and they included a letter. Uh, to address, um. Basically, the the development agreement, I'll just. Access that here. And just to to summarize, they were. Uh, basically saying that with those use restrictions, they weren't uh, opposed to the zone change. They, it wasn't a party endorsement, but they weren't uh, weren't opposed to the zone change. So I'm happy to. Uh, go back through the the map and and uh, more the details of the property the council would like, but that's really the the change that. Over when we reviewed this a few months ago is is the development agreement. Uh, which would restrict the use of of the land to to preclude some of the uses that Magna deemed um. A concern because of potential for water contamination.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Pastrick? So will any auto repair be allowed on this property?
So that that use was not one that they precluded.
Yeah, that's kind of weird.
Which was, I thought the same thing, but but that was not one that they had asked for.
Okay. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you so much for your help.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now go to the consent agenda. Are there any on there that anybody has a question that either Mr. Flores or Mr. Johnson could? Answer for you? Hey. Seeing none. Um, we'll go to our communications. Our legislative update, Lincoln's not available to come tonight, so the spreadsheet is updated. So if you have any questions, you can go into that and look at our position and how things are going. Getting. Next week will be the last of the committee meetings and then it's pretty much done next Friday, so. Getting down to the end. All right. Our Olympic cauldron update.
Ah, yes.
Mister Carol. What have you found?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Uh, council members, um, so I don't know where everyone is up to speed on the uh, hero cauldron. Um, a- and so the hero cauldron um, was a cauldron that was during the medal ceremonies. During the two thousand two Olympics and we had a um, a resident that inquired with mayor to. Uh, see about who had it and could we acquire it? Or procure it? Uh, and essentially, we uh, I was able to find it, the Utah Olympic Legacy Foundation has it and owns it. And um. They are open to the idea of. Us acquiring it from them or or procuring it from them. They had initially had it and it's in storage, they were gonna put it at uh, one of their facilities. Ran out of the funding for it and right now it's just been on hold. Um, so they said they would essentially entertain the idea of us um, making a presentation to them. About how we might use utilize it, but certainly, uh, we have the picture, okay, so there's the picture of what it looks like. Um, essentially, what we would need to do is, so we, so the mayor asked us to put together a little bit of a project to see what this would entail. Uh, which we did. And um, so everybody knows that we we would need to get. Um. Approval from the I O C anytime you lit the uh, cauldron, so it's a little bit, uh, there's a, there's a lot that actually goes into it. Um, this is what we already have at the uh, at the Maverick Center, just so so everybody can see that, so there is an Olympic. Um, recognition that's there already. Um, we put together a a a budget of about three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that it would cost to transport it, to install it. To, we'd have to put gas lines in, we'd have to build a um. A permanent, uh, and the plan would be to put it at the Maverick Center over by the hockey uh, statue that's there already. Um, so from this perspective, we are. You know, we would then be able to go to the, if if we had some indication from the council that this is something that they wanted to pursue. Then we would be able to put together the full. Project presentation to the Utah Legacy Foundation. Um, if they decided that they we, they wanted us to have it, then and and we met whatever our proposal was, met their their goals. Then uh, this is something that we would be able to uh, potentially procure. Um, but it's certainly, they're not obligated to. Having us be uh, the recipients of it. And uh, they said they wouldn't even entertain a proposal until after the twenty thirty four games. Uh, have been uh, decided, which is gonna be right around Paris in in the summer, so. Um, this is the latest update. Uh, any, any questions or direction or thoughts with regards to? Kind of where we are?
So I appreciate you doing all this research. For this one gentleman that would like it in you in West Valley.
Thank you.
So does this, is this functioning at all, it's not a? Cauldron that can be lit?
It is, yeah. Which one? No, 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 ours, no, 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 that's just recognizing as an Olympic venue. Uh, if we wanted to do a cauldron, I just want everybody to be able to see that we already have some representation there, if if you want to have. The uh, cauldron, uh, that will be lit, we would have to have approval by the I O C. And when I mean that, we would put together a plan, right, that we said, okay, if we had. Uh, so if you look at uh, what's over at the uh, at at uh, Rice Echol Stadium, they have the actual torch. That torch, they have to have approval to get lit. That gets lit. For all the, I think Utah home games, so it's a plan that says, okay, we would do, we would. Get it lit, this would be our typical plan that you approve, and then if there are any exceptions, we'd have to also get exceptions uh, approved as well by the I O C. Uh, but they they protect these rights very, very closely, so we don't just get to light it whenever, so. Um. You know, we're looking at a probably three hundred thousand at the minimum to to uh. To actually transport it, right now it's in a crate in a warehouse somewhere. Uh, we don't know if it works, we don't know that much about it, we just know that if uh, our our pro- proposal, our projection is based off a functioning. Um, cauldron.
If it doesn't work, we wouldn't have to pay the gas bill, does it?
That is true, that is very true, yeah.
We no gas. So was your proposal to leave it at ground level? With it only being that?
Our proposal is to build a um. Uh, essentially, uh, some kind, let me, I have to check my notes here for a second, hold on. Um. We were gonna build a, I just had a lens pop out too, so a concrete monument base.
Okay.
Which is essentially, we'd run the gas line through. And then we would um, have a monument base, and again. From the perspective of the uh, of the Legacy Foundation as well as the I O C. This is going to have to be something that's prominent enough for them to grant us the opportunity to do it, so. It's not something that I think that we're going to be able to. Um, do, um, you know, kind of on the cheap, I think it's something that, because they always have the opportunity to tell us. That they're gonna use it themselves, or so it's gonna have to be a a fairly impressive. Um. You know, meaningful use of the cauldron for for them to 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 uh. Give us the opportunity to have it. And it would be a permanent. Um. You know, kind of placement.
And is there precedent precedent for cost sharing with the I O C or the Legacy Foundation, or for example, the torture rice echoes, is that purely a you of you cost?
That is, my understanding is it's purely a uh, a a a you of you cost, yeah, and it was fairly sizable number from what I've been told. Sure.
Is it still pretty even if we don't light it?
Uh huh, you know what?
It's useless to not have it if we're not gonna light.
I think it's, I I, as a matter of fact, I don't think they would probably great, give it to us if, I don't, I don't know, this is my speculation on that, but I'm not sure that they would. Uh, the reason they've been sitting on it. Uh, which they have been is because of the fact that uh, they didn't have it in their budget to be able to do it, so I think at some point. If that was an option, then I think they probably would have done that. So I think that, you know, obviously, this is the Olympics, this is gonna be a ma- a major presentation and they're gonna want it to be. Um, you know, at the level that. They would expect for the Olympic marks and Olympic, um. You know, trademarks and things of that nature.
Maybe our natural gas utility would like to sponsor this.
That's, there you go.
Cinderella, maybe the mosquito baiting.
That's true.
You're getting really creative now. All right, are there any other questions? Because I think this is one you'll have to take back and really think on and. Maybe after strategic plan, we can come up with a plan.
Okay.
Whether or not we want to. Invest that much into it.
Thank you so much, I had a lens pop out, so I'm gonna have to see if I can find it, so just.
Flashlight or reflect it?
Um, I might need one.
Are you just gonna stay here for yours?
Uh, yes.
Okay, we'll let Mr. Flores go on with his.
Okay, so this is the. Yeah, that's the downside of where I'm. I'll go right at long times.
All right, don't mind me, keep going, yes.
We'll have Mr. Flores present on utilities and text to pay.
Yes, uh, so some questions came up on this new feature for the pay by text on utilities, uh, question was asked. Uh, what methods can be used to um. Make those payments, whether it has to be a bank account or it can be paid through a credit card and either one will work. Uh, so just wanted to answer that question and. See if you have any further questions or. Anything else along those lines?
So remind me of this to pay just your utilities, is this to relicensure your dog? Is it pay?
Utilities.
Just utilities?
Just utilities, yep.
Okay.
Dog, I think goes through. The other departments.
Right. Yeah, and that hasn't been working for a while, still doesn't. So. Okay. Any questions on this one? And if there's no questions, are they gonna move forward on with it, or is it still coming back for?
Yep, no, we plan to move forward with that.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no other questions, we'll go on to our strategic plan presentations and turn the time over to Chief Jacobs. For her presentation.
Good evening, Chief Jacobs with the Police Department. And can you squish that down so it's all in one? Thanks. Squish, that's. How technical. I know, that's why we have Ken here. Okay. To start off, I just wanted to reintroduce you to the Police Department a little bit. Uh, we have two hundred and eighteen sworn officers. Forty nine civilian employees, which makes us a total of two hundred and sixty seven, we're the largest department in the in the city. And we are in the people business. Um, last year, just to give you an idea of of a bit of our workload, we had about a hundred and ten thousand calls for service. Which is ten to twelve thousand more than the year before. So, um. Jumping right into it, the Police Department's budget is at thirty eight point eight million. Thirty five point seven million of that is salary and benefits for those employees. Um, actually, it's even for more employees, because the salary and benefits of the thirty five point seven also includes the crossing guards. The two hundred and sixty seven is just full-time employees. Um, so with the thirty five point seven million in salary and benefits, that leaves three point one million. As an operating budget. And I kind of, uh. Wanted to show you my top three expenses, just to give you an idea of. Of what our top three expenses are, but also because it correlates to the rest of the wants and needs as well. So our our absolute biggest expense is overtime. It's about one point five million consistently for the last at least five years. And that doesn't even include the shelter overtime, it includes um. Callouts, carryovers, collateral assignments, holiday pay, T F O assignments, that sort of. Operating, operational cost. Uh, following that is software, it's over six hundred thousand every year. Three hundred and seventy five thousand of that six hundred thousand is body worn camera alone. Um, typically, most of our other. Uh, increases as far as licensing. Um. Usage fees is, but it goes on about a five percent increase every year. Body of the dinner was a little bit different, it's on a five-year contract and we're actually renegotiating that as we speak, so. Our five-year contract started in twenty nineteen and will uh, end this year, I can almost guarantee it'll be more than a five percent increase on on that one. Um, and then our last major cost is fuel. Uh. Run around twenty four seven. We burn gas. So with those in mind, our top budgetary need uh, is absolutely positively market merit and promotional increases. That's what we need to remain competitive and to retain the good employees that we have. Uh, the overtime budget is also. Um. A need for the department. We are consistently about nine hundred thousand dollars over our budgeted cost every year, which makes it that hundred, one point five million. So we're budgeted at six hundred and forty six. Uh. And nine hundred thousand. Over is what we consistently are. Now, that can be um, argued to offset with full-time employees. But there is an amount of police operational costs that is just intrinsically, it's gonna be overtime. Um, if we start looking at full-time employees like I do down in future planning. It costs about. Um, one hundred and ten thousand dollars per brand-new employee to start them with salary and benefits. So moving on to software. Uh, there's a program mod in for that five percent increase. Technology is ever-evolving and it is uh, ever-evolving costly as well. Uh, on the, on the upside, it is an investigator and an analysis multiplier, what used to take days and hours now takes minutes. And there is also um, a degree of of public expectation, specifically with the body worn cameras. But it also reduce, reduces risk and liability and affords us transparency as well. So they're, they're costly, but there are definite advantages to them. The fourth uh, thing listed on budgetary needs is handguns. Um, there's a program, program mod. In for uh. A complete transition of firearms for the Police Department, it would take, it it would leave us on the same platform that we're familiar with, the Glock platform. But with new technology, it has come out with another base that has a better optic on it. I'm gonna try and talk firearms to you, but I'm not a firearms first. I'm gonna try and talk firearms to you, but I'm not a firearms person. I have subject matter experts in this. But it is definitely new technology. The the new optic allows for, um, less likelihood of what's called mistake of fact. The, to not get too technical, the firearms that we use now have mechanical, uh, optics or mechanical. Um, sights, so you have to. It's got one on the front, two on the back, and you have to focus on the front one, which takes your your focus off your target. With this new optic, you leave your focus on your target and as as the optic comes up, you're able to to remain focused on your target. So there's the less like, less of a likelihood of mistake of fact encounters. Um, our current firearms that we're using are seven years old. They're requiring more and more maintenance and repair, um, with a possibility of mechanical failure due to their their frequent usage. Um, with training. And the total payout on or the total price tag on, um, this program mod request is a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for. Uh, both a firearm and the optic. And I put in here at the bottom of it, just for my friend Eric back there, an ounce of prevention is worth one liability payout. So going into the five-year budget needs. Recurring again, market merit and promotional increases, they are an absolute loss for the Police Department. To remain competitive with other agencies and to retain the good people that we have, um, we need to to remain competitive. Software and technology here again. As we talked about, it increases every year with the licensing and the leasing options, not leasing options, the the licensing and the usage fees. And technology is constantly, um, new technology is constantly emerging. It's bigger, it's better, and it's more expensive. Expanding on the the five-year budget needs, it would be nice to get, um, increased staffing. With all of the high-density developments that are going on, it's it's taking a vacant lot that has zero calls for service a year. And expanding it to hundreds, if not up to a thousand calls a year for that same spot. So it is, it is increasing our calls for service. And, um, it would also, having more staff would also allow us to, um. Spend more time on the calls and investigations that we currently have. It would, um, allow for some more, uh, proactive activities as well as, um, increased targeted enforcement. So additional staffing would help the Police Department with our service to the community.
Chief, is there a national standard or guideline for staffing?
The FBI has come out with a, um, number of officers per thousand. But it's not anything that, um.
Mandatory or?
No, it's not mandatory and it really does vary with the communities and different community needs. So really, it's it's. It's a fluff number.
Are we close to that number?
Uh, we're at two eighteen and a hundred and forty-five thousand. Somebody get a calculator. Um, I did have the number on another document I have, but I don't have it off the top of my head, but. That's that's where we're at, a hundred and forty-five thousand residency and two hundred and eighteen sworn. So. And I think the. I think that FBI number is like. Again, without looking it up, it's maybe. One point five officers per thousand.
It's about where we.
So. Um. Okay. Let's see, and then, uh, the last on the five-year budget needs is number four, the ongoing safety equipment. Uh, most of our safety equipment has a life here, has a five-year lifespan and that includes ballistic vests, ballistic helmets. Uh, rifle plates. And that type of equipment. Some of this equipment we're able to replace out at twenty percent a year, so every five years it's getting rotated out. Uh, but some of this equipment, specifically the SWAT equipment. I typically have to wait until I've got a chunk grant somewhere and then we just, uh, in total replace the whole of of that batch of equipment. So we have a a little bit of a mix in how we do our ongoing safety equipment, but it does, uh. Have a have a shelf life. And that's usually about five years for most of it. So moving into the, um, planning for the future. Increased staffing, as we've already discussed, uh. The the more our community grows with the high-density housing, the more calls for service we're gonna have. Um, I'd also like to have additional officers to return to kind of our COP proactive in the community. Uh, concept that we originally started with. Most of their duties have been shifted to unsheltered persons. Which takes them out of our our neighborhoods. So if I had more, um. More staffing, I would be able to cover both areas much better. And then for the the previous reasons already stated, so. Uh, number two, if we are talking hopes and dreams and, uh, wishes for the future. The Firearms Training Center would be, um, just the cat's meow for us. We would really enjoy, um, having that type of facility for a multitude of reasons. Uh, recognizing it would be a multimillion-dollar project. But having the availability to train twenty-four seven, um, with whomever we need, whenever we need would be, um. It would increase our ability to train and our level of training with those, uh, high-risk, low-low-frequency encounters. That we really try to to train for. Uh, the problem that we currently have is that opportunities are very, very limited. There's only. Three ranges that allow for all agencies in the valley to train on them. Uh, Murray has an indoor range. Kate. DK has a range that they allow us to use on occasion. And then Unified has their range or the county has their range up the mountain. So we we have, um. Both limited availability and and, uh, travel costs when we use or not cost, but travel time when we use the range that's up the mountain. Um, but if we were to do, uh, a training center like that, we would be able to incorporate additional, um. Additional classroom facilities as well as bring on, um, what's called a vertra training scenario. It's, uh. It's scenario training that is is live and right now we're only able to do it at the Attorney General's Office. But if we were to, if we were able to provide that as a as a service here as well. Then not only could the other departments in the city use this particular training facility, but it could be rented out. Think right now, we are paying about two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty dollars a day every time we use Murray's range. So it gets. It gets expensive for us, but I think, um, if we had that ability to have this have this facility and rent it out. I think our costs would eventually be recuperated. Um, moving on to, uh, emerging technology, as we've discussed two, three, four times already. It's it's here. It's here to stay. It's not going away. It's here. It's costly, but it's also amazing. There's a variety of current systems that that we don't have, just simply due to cost. In-car camera systems, license plate readers, uh, some data-driven enforcement tools. The the kicker with this one on, um, planning for the future is there is just a big unknown. What's going to be available next? How much is it going to cost? What's it going to do for us? And then the last on the, uh, planning for future changes is succession planning. Um, at every level of leadership in the Police Department, up to and including me, uh, we have people that are eligible to retire. So we're doing our best to, um, plan for the future and develop our next generation leaders and have them be ready to. To step into shoes of of whoever decides to turn the page and go on to the next chapter. And that is my presentation. Any questions, comments?
Any questions from the council?
I had a question of going back on the ratio. Um, is that something that is normally looked at on a regular basis to determine whether or not we have the same? The right ratio of sworn officers to thousand residents or do we just? Like, how often do we do an analysis to see where at the right staff?
Um, I know for the for last year's, um, strategic information, that was one of the things that was requested. So that was provided, um, last year and it hasn't changed since last year. So, um, I know it's looked at how much it's it's factored into how many, how our how it affects our staffing. I'm not aware that that it has made a true difference other than to see if we're close.
So how many new employees do you think you would need in the next five years? We knew open positions.
I would take as many as I could get, but realistically, um. And and that's that's a position that we're uniquely in at this point. Two years ago, you could have given me twenty-five officers and I couldn't fill the seats. So it wasn't even an ask, but now I feel like I can fill the seats no matter how many I have. And. I think, um. Considering where the overtime is at and what staffing issues would be. I would say eight to twelve. Um, eight would help with, uh, both the overtime costs and, um. The the response as far as is. Resupplementing community-oriented and policing. Unit, um, twelve would give us a new a new person in each of the patrol shifts.
Okay. Okay, don't look like any other questions. Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to our strategic plan presentation from the Fire Department and then turn the time over to Chief Evans.
Good afternoon. I probably should have wore a uniform today. Can't ever figure out what I'm supposed to wear now. Tell you that one. Um, I'm gonna have you go through the slides. I have two departments. I I have the Fire and EMS and I have Emergency Management. So I'm gonna split it up a little bit so you don't have to hear from me the whole time. Uh, our immediate needs, uh, probably sounds like a broken record, uh, for us. It is the, uh. The the pay increases. One of the things in the fire service that has happened over the last four years. Is we have lost people and the reason being is the fire departments now are starting to do laterals. Uh, in the past, in the fire service, you didn't lateral. I mean, you you were there. Uh, the past four years, it's it's. Basically coming free for all, I guess I'll say. And, uh. We we're losing people. We need to keep the people we have is is where we're at right now. The next need is we need to hire a minimum of three people. And the reason for this is in order for me to maintain minimum staffing, to staff six fire stations, I need the bodies there. Where we're at right now with, um, their vacation time. We allow five off and that we we can't sustain that anymore. We need to move to six just because that's the time available. So I need to have a minimum of a six, six slots per day that people can take off to use their vacation time. By hiring the three people, we can move to that six, but maintain that level to where we can keep all six fire stations open. The next, uh, big ask is to hire a fire inspector. Our our city keeps growing. We have the need to do inspections and we're lacking in public education. In two thousand and fifteen, we gave up one inspector with some budget cuts and we've never replaced that position since. Um, we're to a point in order for us to keep up in prevention with the building, with the ongoing inspections. And trying to increase our public education, we need to put a person in there. The last one is operational protective gear. Um, we are basically what this is. It's fifty thousand dollars. Every seven years, we have to replace our turnout gear. Uh, the gear we wear into fires. After seven years, it's no longer, I guess, what you'd call guaranteed that. You're not going to burn. Um, right now, uh, we we're not going to be able to keep that seven-year replacement program. In two thousand and twenty and after COVID, turnout gear increased twenty-five percent. You can believe that. It's it's unreal, the cost of this gear right now. So in order for us to just maintain that seven-year replacement program, we don't. We have X amount of gear where it's it's on a time and we just replace so many every year to keep up to that seven years. So that's really our immediate needs. Future needs. Well, um, I guess as the police chief said. Where where are we at? About four years ago, the city built a fire station, Station Seventy-two, which is forty-one hundred South, Forty-third West, by by Winter Dairy. Uh, the city built that station in effect to put two companies in. That's two full companies. This is the busiest station we have. We we planned for that, but we have never staffed that company. We we have never staffed that. The station's big enough, but we haven't put the people in there to do it. So basically, we need fifteen people to put that station to where the station was built for. Fleet replacement. Uh, if you can just click the next slide and then I'll click back. It's been asked for a while. I guess maybe you're sick of hearing from me when I come in and say, hey, by the way, I need about a million and a half right now because a fire truck broke. You probably sick of that comment, right? So between us and fleet, we put together a fleet replacement plan. What this is is so you can just plan what you need over the next years. Um, as you look at this, it it is every one of our heavy fleet. And when you need to replace them. The problem we have now, though, is you see some of them look like they're fairly new. But from the date we order a piece of equipment till it arrives, it's anywhere from two to three years out. It's we, that's just what it takes to build them. Uh, it's not getting any better according to the manufacturers. So we tried to put this list together to say, here's what's needed in a fleet replacement program to be able to fund these continually every year. Uh, the city's never had a fleet replacement program for the fire. And this was asked for, so we put this together. You can go back again. The other one, uh, number three, replacement of Station Seventy-five, the top pitcher up there. The station needs a lot of work and, uh, we dumped money into a station that. Does not suit our needs. Um, the station was built to have a station on the east side before the Olympics. Uh, the bays were to a point now where we were a few years ago with our other station. We can't fit apparatus inside of there. The station needs a lot of work and you can keep dumping money into a station that really isn't what you need. Or in the future, you can look at replacing that fire station. I'll tell you the one critical thing I see with that station is we're right next to an elementary school. And I'm gonna tell you, it's a few times a day when you're pulling out. You you're really, I mean, there's kids all over. It's not a good situation. But that's where we're at. And then the last one, um, kind of with the police. You've seen our training facility over there at seventy-three, uh, where we do live burns. Uh, we're in a residential area and that's not good. Uh, we probably need to be more in an industrial area. Station Seventy-six, which is out west by the amphitheater, there's property there. You're in the middle of a. An industrial area to where if we're lighting fires, live burns to train people, we're not affecting the citizens around there. The last slide. So plans and goals, uh, try to keep it. One of the things that I'm very proud of this Fire Department is we have always been on the cutting edge of medical. Uh, we were the first department in the valley to have critical care paramedics. We were the first department to try to figure out the opioid epidemic to where we're not giving opioids now. We're doing more IV Tylenol. Uh, we've got waivers to do that. Um, our cardiac arrest rates for survival. Um, our cardiac arrest rates for survival is some of the highest in the state of Utah, just because of things we do. So our plan is we need to keep the cutting edge. We can't go back. If there's something new out there, we need our medical division to go for it and just to keep planning that way. With the people, we need to maintain the minimum staffing. That's just the goal and we need to try to keep at least the six fire stations open that we have on a twenty-four-hour basis. And then the next one, we need to keep mer- working towards our standards, our standards of cover. And what that's gonna get us is that ISO rating of a one, the insurance service office. Where that benefits, it really benefits the business community. It benefits the citizens. Your insurance rates that you pay for fire insurance is based on this, especially for businesses. Um, you can save businesses money by us lower in that rate. And that's, that's our goal is to become a class one city. Right now, we're a two. Um. There's a variance of numbers. If you go from a two to a one, you can save anywhere from six to ten percent on fire insurance. Which is a savings for the businesses and some trickle down to the homeowners. And I'm gonna stop there and I'm gonna have Eric Bunderson talk about emergency management. He's been helping me a little bit.
I'm asking questions first.
Yeah.
So with the forty-seven hundred South Bangator Construction Project coming up.
Yeah.
Is seventy-two gonna be able to get on the other side of the freeway? Are we gonna? Um, we're on the east side, what?
Yeah, right, right now, what we're trying to do uh with, with two departments, ourselves and Unified Fire. We're trying to split it up to where we know we're not gonna be able to go um east and west. So we're gonna try to split it up to where if they've got a station closer on that east side that can come west. We've got a station on the west side that can come east. We're gonna try to do that just for the time being that it's shut down. So that's our plan. Response times are going to increase. Uh, one of the, one of the problems I have is if there's a wreck on Bangator is how we're getting to it. Um, that, that's gonna be a big one. I can't. I'm not gonna be able to go the wrong way direction from forty-one to forty-seven without, I mean. It's gonna look like Frogger people flipping all over, trying to get out of our way. So we're gonna have to try to go up and around. That's why we're trying to work with both the UFA and us to figure out who's gonna be closer on both the north and south sides.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions with fire? And then I'll stick around if there's some with it. Yes.
When you're flashing on seventy-five.
Yeah.
Given that the location isn't ideal, could that company move to seventy-two or does that?
No.
Break too big of a gap?
It's a big gap. Needs to stay on that east side somewhere in that area if, if we can. The problem is, is the property, uh, not a lot of property up in that area.
Can you give us an idea of the resources that you would need to reduce your ISO rating to one? Is that additional training needs? Is it?
It's, it's really staffing. Staffing and some train. Uh, when we, when we look at it, ISO looks at four things. They look at the water system, which we, we really don't have control on. You know, it's the water companies. They look at what the flows can be. Uh, your equipment, which we're pretty good at, then it's the personnel. How many, what, what they're asking for is how many people can you get to a scene within X amount of. So it's personnel.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Eric, I'm gonna ask you to come up and then I can, if we got any other questions, we can.
Thank you, um, Eric Bunderson, um. Uh, deputy emergency manager, maybe. One of the, one of the other things I was voluntold I would be doing, um. Uh, a- actually during uh, during, during COVID, um, I did take over the, the logistics of that emergency. And um, uh, with Ken's help, we were able to do a lot of the, uh, the remote work. And um, from there and then through the earthquake, I just started working with John. And um, I, I've actually enjoyed the, the change from my normal duties. And um, so, so I, I, I enjoy this particular collateral assignment. So emergency management is an actual division under the fire department. Um, it is a ghost division in the sense that it has no employees and no money. And so um, uh, for our needs, uh, we did want to discuss that a little bit today. Um, uh, particularly, and uh, these will be seen in the program mods that we, that we be provided a, a yearly budget for the equipment that maintain, that we maintain. Including the um, large equipment and the small equipment like the satellites and radios uh that are used exclusively for, for emergency management. Um, one of the firefighters who runs the CERT program is retiring. And we believe uh with the person that we are using from my department uh to help with the administration of emergency management. If we were able to move her over uh to continue that um administration of emergency management. And manage the CERT program once this firefighter has retired. Uh, we think we could do with one full-time employee in emergency management and, and handle the rest as we've been handling it. Um, uh. We have some large equipment we'd like to be able to store somewhere. And then um, as we've discussed with the council in the past, the matching funding for that uh mobile EOC. So this is the current equipment that we have, as you can see. Um, we have that uh mobile EOC, uh, which we are gonna, through that federal grant, get a new one and sell this. And that could, uh, that could provide us some funding towards, towards uh the matching grant. Um, we have the, these are portable restrooms, which, you know, you don't want to think about. But are very, very necessary during the course of an emergency. And um, we have that comms truck that we got from Salt Lake City that we've now refurbished and uh is, is working. And uh has all the, the communications to support mobile emergency management. Then we have these great big generators that can uh, that can power a, a small hospital if they need to. Um, this is the, the design of the, the EOC, the emer- the emergency operating center, the mobile one. And then the kind of truck that we would need to get. And um, so, so those are our four current needs. And then to can, so the future needs would be to continue that funding. And then um, the one, uh, hopefully fun thing for you guys uh would be that, that we would like to include all city staff. Including the city council in our future uh drills and planning. Um, so you know what to do when something happens and you know uh, wh- where you're supposed to be and how, how we communicate with you. So uh, that, that's a freebie. We just need to coordinate with you and uh we'd like to do that this year. Um, are there any questions about any of that?
Thank you. One more slide. I didn't get to the last slide.
Is there one more after that?
There we go.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Like me on certain days.
This was the best one too, because this was uh Dan's reason for getting the marsh master. So, so yeah, we're, um, our, our plan this year is um, we're going to uh continue to update all of our, uh, all of our plans. Um, you know, the feds requires to have these specials, specialized um plans and annexes for all kinds of emergencies, wind, earthquake, et cetera, floods. Um, we are focusing particularly on the Utah First Amphitheater this year. In terms of um, we're doing uh one set of, one set of drills concerning a reunification center with our victim advocates and our facilities people. And we're doing a, a summer kind of active, active shooter drill at the actual amphitheater. And then in the fall, we'll do a couple more things. So we're just kind of trying to train everyone on this one particular thing. And then next year, we'll, we'll pick a different disaster. Um, and so um, we also have a website and in that website, uh, we try to include all the public education, your go kits. And your, and your, and, and all the kind of stuff you would need, uh, because if our citizens are, are taking care of themselves, we can handle the bigger uh problems. Um, and, and we also instill that into the staff um as we train them. Make sure you and your family are taken care of, so you can come help the city as quickly as you can.
So my one question was, the person you, that's already helping you on the emergency preparedness. If they take over the CERT, the retiring firefighter, they'll be replaced as a firefighter, but just not have the CERT responsibility?
Yeah, and it's, I'll tell you his name, it's Battalion Chief Fitzgerald. He's done CERT. Uh, he was the one that actually brought the CERT program from California. To here.
Okay.
That's how long he's been doing it.
He's been having a long time.
Twenty-five years.
Okay.
I, I'll tell you, you know, emergency management's one of them things you never think of. Um, quite honestly, in twenty twenty, I really was wondering what I was doing. Cause um, I'd never thought I'd have an earthquake. You know, everybody talks about it, but it's like one of them things, you're not gonna get a flat tire either. And uh, I don't think anybody would have really thought we were having a pandemic. I mean, seriously, I gotta kinda go back to my history teachers and say, what, what were you thinking when they told us that wouldn't happen? But you know, from twenty twenty till now. Um, this city's probably better prepared and equipped than we have been since the start of the city. I will tell you that.
Great. Thank you. All right, now we'll begin the Steve Postrick Show. So the general plan update and information we've requested.
All right, so the, the first couple of items we have are just some, uh, some data points the council had requested. So I'll share my screen and just go over those briefly and I'm happy to answer any questions on those. So first of all. So um, this first uh spreadsheet. Looks at different kinds of residential uses in the city. And the uh twenty twenty-two call volume uh or average call volume in terms of per unit to each of those different housing types. So what we did, just uh to explain this. We took all of the calls except for traffic-related calls, which um aren't really tied to residential. And, and mapped those and then figured out which of those calls landed on, you know, an apartment complex or a town home. And then uh essentially aggregated those and they came up with averages. You can see um, you know, again, how those compare across different types. So you know, disclaimer, this is only one year of data. So um, you know, it could be that in, in other years, the numbers would be different, but um. So like it is with the data is a pretty good sample. One that I thought was pretty interesting, just in looking at this, just a quick editorial is that if you look at owner occupied homes, which would be this cell here. Versus renter occupied homes, on average, a renter occupied home would have twice the call volume as an owner occupied house. So just again, pretty interesting that way. Um, and then you can see as you compare down the list, you know, townhomes being slightly less. Um, when it comes to apartments. Um, there, those are gonna be slightly higher, which the next, the, the next spreadsheet then breaks down apartment complexes. And looks at how do those compare across different apartment complexes? So these are all, all projects with at least twenty units or more. And you can see the location, the name of the project, how many units, what the density is, uh, how old it is or when it was built. Um, the number of calls and then the calls per unit. And there's a wide range, right, that ranging from, you know, very low in this case to point one and five. All the way up to, in some cases, to almost two uh calls per unit. And the coloring here just to explain, so the colors, uh, you're trying to see if there is any kind of a correlation here. So the blue are um low-income tax credit projects or basically income restricted uh projects. Um, the red are ones that are owned and managed by Housing Connect or the County Housing Authority. The ones in green are ones that are uh Utah Housing Preservation Fund. So again, and o- other income restricted, but just a different entity. And then the ones where the names are in bold are ones that are uh age restricted, so they're, they're more towards, towards seniors. And um, the only ones that we found that was, that there was, there seemed to be a little bit of a trend would be. On the ones from the County Housing Authority tend to be higher. So we've uh um, mentioned that to the county and are at this point trying to get a little more detail as to the nature of those calls. That we can share with them and see maybe what's uh the reason for that. But um, in our view as staff, as we looked at this, it, it seems that, that the main difference when it comes to uh those projects that have higher call volumes or lower. Would be the management, because you have some projects that are older and, and you know, same or higher density. But yet have lower call volume than newer projects, right? So it, it doesn't seem to be connected uh based on age, but more just how they're managed. So um, so again, this was, this information we provided just at the request of the council. And you have these spreadsheets in your packet, but any, any questions I can answer on, on these?
As a city, what kind of carrots, stakes do we have to mitigate management?
Sure. One thing we've done over the last, probably more than five years now is when we've had proposals for apartment developments. Uh, when they're asking for a zone change, we've actually included uh management standards in the development agreement. So that certainly helps so that if we do have problems, there are, there are things that are in those management standards. We can ask for them to show us, hey, are you meeting these and provide documentation, like are you screening tenants, that sort of thing? Uh, unfortunately, we haven't always done that and so we don't have that uh lever on all of the project. But, but certainly on the newer ones, we have, um, we have that as a um. But probably more a stick approach, I would say, on an enforcement side. Uh, one of the things we're also working on uh with Neighborhood Services is um, we're trying to get a, a report to where. We can put in a, a time range or a, a date range and then get the specific calls to a, an apartment complex. That we can then share with the apartment complex to, again, at least to, to provide more of the um, just a resource. And hopefully make them more aware of what kinds of calls are happening and, and hopefully they can use that information to maybe change how they do things. And one other, unless there are other questions on this, one other just uh point before we jump into uh the discussion on Redwood Road is. The Council of Whetstone had asked or raised a question that was related to the general plan about uh food deserts. So it's areas that um, where there's maybe a lack of grocery stores, particularly ones that provide like fresh produce. Instead of just like uh non-perishables. And we put together this map just as a, as a resource. So this shows um all of the different um grocery stores in the city. So the ones in red are more your typical chains, like your Smiths, your uh, you know, Harman's, that kind of thing. And then blue would be ones that are more kind of local or ethnic type markets. So just from our perspective, I, I feel like we have a pretty good, in terms of staff, we, we have pretty good coverage in the city for, for groceries. But again, just um, just thought this would be a helpful resource, so. Any questions on this one?
Well, the information was very well done. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So now shifting gears to uh our next segment of road on Redwood Road. So before I get into that presentation, I just wanted to hot, mention briefly that we do have for the council's benefit, a couple of maps that are included in your packet. This one just shows, uh, so the area we're gonna be looking at is, is Redwood Road between Thirty-Fifth South and Twenty-First South. So I won't go over this because there's a lot of detail, but um, this just shows the kinds of businesses that exist in that area already. So this is just more of a resource. And there's also a map here that shows um, schools and kind of parks that are in that area already. So again, just a, just a resource, we won't spend a lot of time on that, but um, that may be helpful as we look at these properties. So again, just a just a resource, we won't spend a lot of time on that, but um, that may be helpful as we look at these properties. All right, so with that uh intro. We're picking up the next section of Redwood Road and would love your feedback. Uh, again, as we talked before on the south portion of Redwood. The consultant looked at areas where uh. They saw the potential for your development or redevelopment. And just as a reminder, on this slide, I know this is small. The ones that are outlined in green were ones that uh, there was uh, they viewed as. A likelihood of being developed or redeveloped in the short term, so within the next five years. And the ones in yellow are outlined in yellow are ones that. Were more in the five to ten-year range.
So then, uh, is this in our packet?
The PowerPoint.
Opening for you?
It did.
It's not opening today. Okay. I'll just. Enjoy your.
So the. So we look at each of these, so moving from the south to the north and mention briefly what. Uh, what the the consultant had suggested. And and then again, welcome your your uh, your feedback here. So this first one, three and a half acres, it's where if. If you're familiar with where the Westerner is, there's also a restaurant there just south of the Westerner. Right, and so this. I think I really hear that, no, you like comment, the. The the reason the consultant looked at this is just because there's so much parking, right? Now, it is all improved. Um, but um, just given the nature of the business being a kind of a dance club or dance hall, they do use or. Need quite a bit of parking per the code. So under the redevelopment scenarios here. One showed commercial along the frontage with townhomes in the the back, which would be more towards the west end. And then the second option was just all townhomes and just uh some pictures here. So the. Uh, the restaurant that was there on the left, and then you can see the western, and of course, the large parking lot. We did uh have this same review with the planning commission, just to get their feedback. They leaned toward the first option A as far as uh terms of land use. And with that, any thoughts from the council on preference A or B or something else entirely?
So this is for a future, not somebody asking right this minute.
Exactly. So on on on, that's the case in all these. Now, there are. There are a couple of examples as we go up the street where we may have had a more recent inquiry, and I can fill you in on that. Uh, but yeah, these are more where the consultant identified uh opportunities and. Uh, what the the plan is, is to take your input and then actually update the the city's general plan map that would then. Officially be adopted, saying, here's what the city would like to see along Redwood Road.
Any thoughts on this one?
I prefer to go option A. The the reason why, I'll tell you why. Uh, from thirty, from thirty-five itself up to highway, you know, uh the I fifteen and also I two fifteen. And also highway to O one. I think we have a problem with the the traffic congestion um, the morning and afternoon. Be be because we have a two big, you know, uh, freeways. And one a highway, so people they try to get into those. And. Red Joe Market and other places, it's hard for make a left turn or hard to make a uh right turn. It's very, very bad. So we try to eliminate uh. As much as we can, you know, the number of cars going to that that street from. From thirty-five itself up to uh, to O one, I mean, yeah, to fifteen and I fifteen.
So you think. With nine thousand square feet of commercial. Would have have less traffic than. Eight more homes?
I don't know, but I hope it's a. I will. At least. One unit have two or three cars. And they. Gonna cause a problem for the traffic, you know. Commercial, you can go in and go out, and sometimes you're not gonna go every day. But how long is that you have to do with every day?
Well, the commercial would be spread out during the day, where the homes would maybe be. Work schedule and. I like the idea of the commercial just so that. The homes right are right on Thirty-Five, I mean, on Redwood Road. Because I think you need that buffer. I think it's more for the residents than it is even traffic.
Right, I don't wanna live right on.
No.
By Thirty-Five hundred south.
Yeah, I think that little bit of separation with commercial makes most sense for that reason.
And and we've seen both. We've seen projects that have commercial, you know, as a as a buffer and then townhomes in the back, and then we've done. A few projects where the the residential goes right up. Now, although it's generally not facing Redwood, it's maybe to the side or the back, but. Uh, we've we've done both.
I just wonder if nine thousand square feet of commercial is enough to be a buffer. I mean, that's. That's not a whole lot of, I mean, it's a quarter of an acre.
It's it'd be essentially like a couple of pad sites, basically. Forty-five hundred, five thousand square feet in a in a pad-type building. It would take the frontage within access to the back. Uh, another example, just off the page, but um just south of Paris Furniture, there's something similar where. There's a couple of commercial pads in front and then townhomes behind it.
And we're posing book commercial into the out-of-business commercial building?
Potentially, me again, this this assumes that there'd be some kind of redevelopment. Of course, the Westerner's still open, and so that. That this would all be, you know, contingent on them wanting to do something different down the road. Uh, so assuming they wanted to change, this would be future direction for that. Okay.
Yeah, hopefully they'll find a new restaurant for that, because it was a good sit-down restaurant.
Being from the south, I'm a fan of barbecue, so I actually ate there and I thought it was pretty good, so.
Yeah, that was good barbecue.
So this uh, this next one is, so moving north, so just under five acres. It's a collection of different properties, and it's kind of a mixed bag here. You've got um. A a restaurant that's on the the north there. Uh, and then you've got a couple of homes along with a an auto repair business right here on the corner. Uh, so again, mix, uh, kind of a mixed bag. In this one, you have, option A was. Uh, commercial with townhomes, again, more towards the east end. And then option B was more. Of the townhomes. In this case, the the planning commission actually recommended um. The option B, and I think the reason here is because you have kind of this three-sided property. Where you have, um, it goes all the way back in some cases to Lester Street, which is a residential street. And then the street on the south end, Thirty-three Hundred South. Is also residential, so you have ways of connecting into the neighborhood. So that was their their thought process on that. Couple of pictures here, of course, this is uh, we caught it on a snowy day here. The the restaurant on the the picture on the right. And then the repair shop on the left. And a couple of the, this the home on, one of the homes on the left, and then this image on the right was from Lester Street. Um, so you can see that's more on the east side of the property. That's still last image for that one. So uh, comments on this one or thoughts on this one?
Think you still have concern with residential right on Redwood. Could have that be commercial, the first. Yet from that, and still have access. To Lester and Thirty-three Hundred for residential, so I. Go for option A.
Well, I would go for option A with everything. So I don't see why we can't have single-family homes along Lester. There's homes across the street. Um, I honestly think. That line that goes through that shed or whatever. That that entire piece could be a cul-de-sac with homes and. I mean, I really don't know the widths, but.
Sure, sure.
I think some single-family could work in there really well. And I think with Lester behind and not even have access to Redwood Road. Would make more sense than entirely townhomes. Haven't we seen this property? In the last few years.
In the last few years, so that the this parcel here and then this one here. Uh, we actually had a proposal for a used car lot. They wanted to, so. Basically, the west part is already commercial, but the east part's not. And so they were wanting to rezone the whole thing, and and that actually was denied.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I'd rather have an option C that has some single-family homes. That's separated from the commercial on the Redwood Road side.
So commercial and single-family without towns. Okay, other other thoughts on that?
Because I think with that depth, we could get some really nice commercial in there. I mean, there's a really nice commercial to the south of us on Redwood Road. But with our normal depths, we just can't get that. And I think these deeper lots, it makes more sense to put commercial and then just have that little bit of back. Residential.
So the next one, here Thirty-two Ten South, uh, about six acres. Again, you have a mix of different uses. So um, to the north, you have. You know, Utah Barricades, so they have, they provide like traffic control type uh. Um, inventory they have stored on the site that they uh run out. Then to the south, you have, I think it's Carefree Homes, so it's a manufactured home sales business there on the south end.
Is it for prefabricated, prefabricated homes?
Correct, yeah, that's right. So in this one, um, given the. This property compared to some of the other ones is fairly shallow, so they they did kind of all all or one or all the other. So um, A is all commercial and the other one's all townhomes, again, just because it's not as deep as some of the other ones. And here, the the planning commission, in looking at this, actually. Was open to either scenario, um, so either A or B and kind of giving that option. Um, again, here's some pictures. You can see the on the left or both of these would be the manufactured home sales. And then these pictures would be for the. Uh, the Utah barricade business. Just south of the the sheperd on there.
Again, I'd rather see commercial.
I agree, yeah.
Are you looking at the commercial of being sells tags, R P tags? Townhomes, call for service. And I just.
Would be opposed to a little residential on that south piece, accessing that the. But other than that, I'd be.
Moving north again, so two and a half acres. Uh, this one's kind of a a little bit odd piece. Uh, you've got. Uh, it's it's a bit isolated in that just to the north, you have the power lines, so that's Rocky Mountain Power owned property here. So it looks like it's vacant, but it actually has those. Uh, overhead, uh, large transmission lines to the north, so that. Uh, likely won't develop, other than maybe parking for something, uh, but it can't really have any buildings on it to the north. You have a home with some outbuildings on here, and so again, um, I think. Given just limited uh access, it'd all be from Redwood, and you can't really expand this in any in any direction, given what's around it. Uh, you've got. Uh, option A was commercial frontage with townhomes in the back, and then B is all townhomes. And then just again, a couple of pictures. The one on the left is the home that's out front. And then this image is actually looking uh more towards the kind of the southwest, uh where you can see the overhead power, which is. Again, to the north of this property, so you can get a sense of what's right next to it.
So the power lines run east-west?
East and west, right. Through, so you can see right here, there's one of the the power poles right here, and those. Go, the lines run this direction.
So across the street from the rec center?
Right.
What's the, what's the business north of the power lines?
So the what's here is an assisted living facility and then an office building up front.
No, it used to be a memory care, didn't it? Or is it still, is it still a memory care? I just remember seeing that on the building as I drove by.
So planning commission, this one leaned towards B, and I think again, the you got residential to the south. Um, and it's it's. Doesn't have a whole lot of frontage compared to some of the other pieces we looked at in terms of commercial.
Is the tracks line at twenty-seven hundred?
Twenty-seven seventy, yeah, so.
Couple of blocks.
Quarter-ish mile north.
I'm a big concerned about uh. Our line. About regional. Area is so close by.
I think one of the other challenges, because this property is pretty deep and has limited frontage. Doing commercial that far back is just, it would be really challenging.
So it was a boat salesman and they stored all their stuff back there. Boats, cars, motorhomes. That's the only commercial I can see needing that depth.
We have a projection or indication of what the county intends to do. Across the street, is that something they're invested in maintaining as a rec center forever, or if they waffle back with other ideas?
And I'm not sure enough, Jamie knows kind of the their thought process there on the county, the rec center.
I know it's their goal to rebuild, uh, at least do a significant refurbishment, but um, but it's it's a kind of down-the-road project. It's not anything that they have funded or. Or even uh specific plans for, but I know that's one of their goals is to get that um, facility.
To me, that's a fundamentality for a residential type area to have around, so.
I know they've reached out in the past to the students down at Redwood Elementary. Tried to get some. Outreach there to the families.
Sounds like it's gonna stick.
I'd I'd be okay with either option.
Are there restrictions on proximity to some big noisy car lines?
No, the, not in terms of city, city regulations and. You know, that we do have some scenarios, we'll maybe Rocky Mountain Power might actually have an easement that goes beyond their property, is kind of a a buffer, but. Not aware of any kind of restrictions on this property.
We we built some houses up in Brigham City, right next to power lines. It was. We had to be. Our rooftop couldn't be a certain. Um, distance away from the power lines, but that was it.
But here, but here you can hear the noise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our original my hometown area was talking to the Utah Power about. Getting some of the land in their area under those lines as a part of.
Yeah, I I don't care either way, but the thing is a major power lines right here, you can hear the noise.
True.
Clearly. Yeah, that's why I'm gonna kinda worry about that.
Yeah, and we. Well, that's true. We do have a number of residential areas that that are but big power lines like these, so it's not not un uh not unheard of, so.
Even uh up at the ridge, there's some power lines that go right next to the houses.
Right.
On the ridge golf course, you can hear. It didn't stop anybody from building houses in the ridge and moving in, so.
All right, so the next one is just a little bit north. Uh, this one. Uh, is again, some of these are challenging in that um. So this, this property is, uh, was essentially intended to be. Developed as part of that assisted living center and office building, but has just been vacant for years. That's never got developed along with the rest of that. Most likely, uh, and this would be UDOT's call, but most likely UDOT would wanna see access through this. Existing development as opposed to granting a new access onto Redwood Road. So uh, if that were the case, that would. Probably make townhomes a little more challenging to do. But uh, again, this scenario, the um, option. A was for commercial along the frontage with townhomes in the back, and then B was all townhomes. Um, image here, this is looking towards the west at the the assisted living facility in the back there, and then the office building. Um, image here, this is looking towards the west at the, the assisted living facility in the back there, and then the office building is just off image there. This is one where the, the planning commission had a kind of a different thought, and that was either commercial or even potentially some kind of light industrial. So this, this development to the north is actually more, uh, kind of commercial, light, industrial mix. So they saw this as perhaps it could be an expansion of that project that's to the north as opposed to trying to, to do residential or expanding what's on the property to the south.
So is this property to the south using these people's property? I mean, would that become an issue? The sidewalks?
So I, and I, I can verify this, but I believe it's the same ownership. It's just never.
Right now, it's no big deal. But if they sold, then maybe.
Yeah, they would have to retain an easement for the, the walkway and the, uh, they would have probably some kind of a cross access easement for the driveway there.
So yeah, I think I agree with the planning commission to make it all commercial. That's real, yeah. How wide is the frontage on it?
If I had to guess, that's probably about two hundred feet.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe one fifty. All right, these are, these are really tough. Um, so the, you've got two, two, uh, pieces of or groups of parcels here. So, um, the one on the north are remnant parcels that, uh, the, so UTA acquired to put in the tracks line. And then they sold those off, and they're now privately owned, but they're really, really shallow. So you can see uh, across the street here to the south and further east, you have homes. But these are, these are really shallow in terms of north to south. And then these, uh, are more, you know, these parcels here are more common to what you see in some of the other parcels, like, you know, for example, the one to the west, Strip Mall was built on that, and it's the same kind of size there. So in this case, the, um, the consultant assumed commercial along this piece and then maybe trying to piece together some way of doing homes here. I'm not even sure if that's possible, given the depth. It's ju- just a really awkward piece of property. Uh, or, um, you know, option B was again, homes with, with, uh, townhomes on this south piece. And just looking at some images here, so this is, um, the, the, the property to the south. Um, so looking, the one on the left is looking from the south of the property towards the north. And then this, the one on the right is looking from Redwood Road. And on this one, uh, the planning commission just really leaned towards commercial on, on all of it, although again, I honestly, in that north piece, I'm not sure what you do with that north piece. It's a tough piece of property.
Ockert Park?
Starbucks.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. Frizz is?
Yeah, or something, yeah.
With the cauldron.
Next to the tracks. Yeah, I mean, the one to the south, I agree with the commercial uh, north one. I can see it being a problem. But if it's there long enough, it might turn into something like a small retail drive-through something.
Well, they're the right time of day. There's a retail operation going on anyway.
Right now?
Pull up, unload your car and.
Yes, sir.
Sail on the side of the road.
Yeah.
Seen that?
All right, so this next one, I think we uh, likely already have a, a, a solution for. So in this, the consultant at the time didn't have the benefit of knowing kind of the latest on this. So, um, this was, uh, an area where you have these kind of office condos and then more industrial condos on the north and the west. The, uh, RDA, you recall recently, or did own these, but then recently, uh, moved to sell these. And so the thought was to do more of these kind of industrial type, uh, uses. So I think in this situation, this one's pretty well settled at this point. Just the consultant didn't have that, the benefit of that information, so. Um, like we can, unless there's comments on this one, I think we can pretty well say this one's settled. All right, uh, just two more. So this one, uh, again, this is another one where the consultant didn't have the benefit of knowing that this south piece here that has a home on it was acquired by Mountain America Credit Union. So they're planning on building a credit union on this south piece, so that's pretty well spoken for. That's going to remain. So then it's really a question of what you do on this property to the north. And th- this south piece here has uh, kind of a home slash business. It's, uh, where someone that has a home, but also runs a business there too, uh, on this piece here. And then I think this one's just a home here to the north. So really, again, the south piece is spoken for. It's just a question on this north, uh, section, what the preference is there. And again, the consultant here looked at all commercial versus a, uh, kind of again, commercial townhome mix. And again, pictures, the home has actually since been demolished. So this, looking at the image on the left is the, the partial where the Mountain America Credit Union is going to go, I believe. And then just a couple more. So this, the, the images here showed the, um, the home that has the, the business in it that's more this partial right here. And just feedback from planning commission. So of course, leaving the Mountain America Credit Union out, since we kind of have commercial use here, which it's, and I want to say the property is either goes on commercial or residential business. It's kind of has a business already that uh, it could potentially just stay as is, given what's there already.
I think A is great.
Last but not least, we've got this, uh, property at twenty-three thirty-one South Redwood. This one again is a little different in that, just for context, the property to the south, the council actually rezoned a couple of years ago for townhomes. So that one would be just townhomes to the south. Then you have south of that, you have the, uh, another townhome development. The property to the east is, uh, Granger Hunter, so it's a, uh, if it's a seer lift station or a pump house, water pump house. And then you have homes on these properties, and these are, uh, ones that have basically very, or very shallow frontage, but then are very deep off of the road. And so in this scenario, the, uh, option A was a blend of again, commercial and townhomes versus, uh, all townhomes, which would be similar to what was done on the property to the south. And then the, just again, a couple of images, these are the homes that, um, are along, that, that face Redwood Road.
What's on the corner there, Redwood and the seven eleven?
So this one, the planning commission leaned towards option B, given what's to the south and that you have the twenty-three twenty, once you get past Redwood is, uh, mostly residential, then if you go far enough east, you start getting into Metro Business Park, but most of twenty-three twenty is residential. So you could, you know, potentially have the access off the twenty-three twenty and not have access on Redwood.
If we do option B, it doesn't mean that somebody could come in and say, we want to zone this park commercial and this park residential. They can still do that. It's just, we're just kind of putting our take on the general plan.
Right, so someone, someone can always, I mean, I'll take a step back. How we've always approached zone change applications is when someone comes in to, to request a zone change, if, if what they're requesting matches what's in the general plan, they do just a zone change application. Uh, if they're proposing to, to do something that doesn't comply with the general plan, uh, they do a different application, which does cost more. Uh, but also there's, it's kind of more burden on them to say, okay, tell us why we should do something different than what's in the general plan. The theory being that if they're doing something that complies with the general plan, it should be, you know, unless the, unless the council's directions change, should be sort of in line with what the council wants. But if it doesn't, they need to provide more kind of documentation and more kind of sell us on why we should do that.
And the only extra step for us is a general plan change and a zone change instead of just a zone change, correct?
But it's, but it's all done on the same agenda. It just more, puts more burden on the applicant to, to really help us or, or explain why the city should change direction.
So is that a suggestion? What was your follow-up on that? Just a question?
Well, uh, man, this is a tougher one because you've got the townhomes for the south. And then you have the access to the twenty-three thirty.
Right, twenty-two twenty, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think I would probably leave the option A.
Stick with commercial on the front, next to the sub?
But, you know, yeah, that's why I say if somebody came in and said, I wonder if townhomes all through it, probably would be okay with that too. Either could make sense if there were some questions.
Great, no, I, as always, we appreciate the feedback, so that's all we've got for today, and then we'll be back with the round three, I think in a week or two, so.
Because you have like five different zone or areas you're looking at?
So we have, uh, the next two are on thirty-fifth. We have thirty-fifth kind of split up into, to two groups. And then we have the, the southwest part of the city where we have some large kind of gravel pits and, and vacant properties out there. And then we reserve one more for, if there's anything else, the, any, any other areas the council wants to talk about, we've kind of put a placeholder for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll go on to the council calendar. Did anyone have any concerns? With this? Hey, seeing none? New business, potential future agenda items? Did anyone have anything? Seeing none? Council reports. Tom doesn't have one. Anybody else? Lars has one, yay.
The, uh, audit committee met, uh, a couple of weeks ago and to review the, the most recent audit for last year's fiscal year. And they did a thorough audit and, and, uh, our our staff, our, our finance department and, and all the controls came through with flying colors. It was, uh, it was a very clean audit compared to, I mean, they've always done very well, but usually there's one or two findings that we have to to review and look and correct. But they, there was not any this time. The, uh, the paper copy is in the council office there in my box, if you want to review that. There's, I think it's online.
I was gonna say, I thought it was online somewhere, or was it going to be?
An audit, the supplemental report, we usually don't publish with the audit, um, and so it's usually not on the regular links, but we can, we can have it available. You have any questions? So we're happy to answer them. The mayor and I are on that committee, and so is, uh, Mr. Flores. We're looking for a resident to, to serve on that committee. Someone with a financial background, preferably an auditor, but someone who lives in, in West Valley City. So if you know someone that might, uh, be willing to serve in that position, let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything I missed?
I think that's it. I, I could certainly come up and give you all kinds of detail. It probably wouldn't be that interesting, but I think you're pretty well covered up.
Simply passed with flying colors.
You know, really, they, we do a great job. With an organization our size, we're, we have to be very vigilant to, to prevent anything from happening, and, and maybe something will happen because we are this big, but, but, uh, they do a very good job to keep those controls in place so that we can avoid those kind of issues, but nice work, very nice work.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. This time we don't have need for a closed session, so we just have one more agenda item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned.